Yeah, all right.
All right, here you go. Hey, everybody. Welcome to Pizza and Politics. I'm Stephen from Playa Pizza. This is Austin Arthur, candidate for Orange County Commissioner District One. It's on the August 20th ballot, and we're gonna make some pizza. What do you say?
Sounds good.
Have you ever made a pizza before?
No.
All right, this will be fun.
Watched my wife do it with the kids.
Okay, all right, Austin. So what we're gonna do, you still see us over here? Okay, cool. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take this scraper right here, soft, and you can pick one. Which one do you want? I'll let you pick.
I like that guy right there.
That one right there. So you're gonna, you're gonna cut right there. I'm gonna let you cut it.
Okay.
And then you're gonna take your hand, and the goal is to keep this as circular as possible, as possible.
Okay.
And you're gonna scoop with one side, however you feel comfortable, and you're gonna kind of simultaneously scoop with both. Don't be shy, but don't beat it up. So what I tell everybody is, make pretend you're holding your wife's hand the first time you're on a date. All right, so go ahead. Let's take that out.
All right, good.
And I know, I know you've had our pizza before.
Yes, of course.
We are really proud of our ingredients and proud of the fact that we don't use any bromine, chlorine, or bleach. You're doing really good.
Is it?
Yeah, you're doing good. And just, yep, don't be shy to go faster.
That's why it's kind of dark, right? Because you don't use.
The dark is the, that's actually the yeast. So that's the gluten.
But the lack of bleaching of some sort.
Yeah, we have no bleach, no chlorine, and no bromine. And then, uh, we wanna keep that straight. So now at this point, put your finger on one side and scoop from the other, scoop with the other.
Okay.
Keep it as a whole. And then we do a 72-hour cold ferment. And we have people who have gluten intolerance, and they say that they really like our pizza and our dough, and you just throw it right in there. And that's because.
Throw it in here.
Yep, throw it right in. That's because they're at 72-hour cold ferment. We give the yeast time to live and grow. That sounds fun. We give it the time, we give the yeast time to live and grow, and then that makes it easily digestible. When you get a one-day-old dough or a five-hour-old dough, it's like a heavy rock in your stomach.
Oh, really?
Another thing that we always hear is that people actually enjoy our crust. I don't know the mystery of the crusts, but I guess that might be it.
It's good.
So what we're gonna do here is.
I'll find out.
You tell me if you like our crust. Do you like crust normally?
Yeah, I'm okay with crust, especially if I dip it in something.
Okay, we'll have to get some dipping sauce. All right, so I'm just, I'm just gonna put some of this semolina. This is semolina and Neapolitan flour blend that we put. And then I'm gonna ask you to kind of take your whole palm and push the air out to keep, exactly. And we washed our hands. We.
Oh, yes. Very clean. I did it twice. As I touched my phone, he got really mad.
And then flip it over and do it again. And there you go. Perfect. All right, so what we're gonna do now, you get, get there, we're gonna do it again. So what we're gonna do now is we're gonna take a little bit, and we're gonna flour your workstation.
Okay.
And then we're gonna take this pizza peel right here.
Good deal.
And we're gonna flour that as well. And we're gonna wanna do that so it can slide off into the oven.
A little bit of that there.
Perfect. Great job.
Nice and sliding.
So now what you're gonna do, oh, that's beautiful. This dough is beautiful. This is really good dough.
Nice. It's great.
Just from peeling it. So you wanna take your palms again, remember that first date where you're holding hands, right? Real gentle but nervous.
Very polite.
You're gonna be polite. That's the word. So you're gonna take those fingers, and you're gonna caress and get the air out with just your fingertips. Again, don't be shy, but don't beat it up, right? So go ahead and. And you're, you're kind of are doing it naturally. You wanna, you're trying to form the crust as you do it.
Right.
Nice work. And flip it over and do it on the other side. This time, let's see if you can get some indentation from your fingertips in there. Perfect.
Okay. It's looking good.
Looking good. So we got the air out. So now what we're gonna do, we're gonna flip it back over.
Okay.
And we're gonna form your crust line. And the way that you're gonna form your crust line, you kind of had your hand there. So you kind of wanna make a half moon, or I guess it wouldn't be a crescent moon.
Sure, yeah.
And you wanna, that's gonna maintain your crust line. And if you look at my fingertips, just my fingertips, they're touching the dough, but you see how my fingertips, the skin is not touching the skin.
Right, right.
So you're gonna do that, and we're gonna make the crust line, and then we're gonna spin it. And make the crust line and spin it. Make the crust line and spin it.
Beautiful.
All right.
Let me do that.
And you wanna, you wanna get, this is gonna be a pretty thick crust. So see how dead mine is right there?
Okay.
Remember, the dough's gonna rise in the oven. So yep, we'll get the air bubbles later. But just form that crust line and spin it. Form that crust line and spin it.
Full disclosure, I am not the cook in my house.
That's okay. This is fun. At least I hope it's fun.
No, this is great.
I really like the, the touch of the dough. There's something cathartic about it.
Yeah, well, it's nice and cool.
All right, good. So now what we're gonna do, we have a little bit of a crust line. Let me just finish that for you. And now what you're gonna do is, we're gonna stretch it. So we're gonna make this, see how it's already gotten larger?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
We need to make it 12 inches, all that. Yeah, yeah. So now, you're gonna take your same, same four fingers, and you're gonna take it here, and you're gonna use all this flour underneath as kind of like your workstation.
Yeah.
And you're gonna stretch it this way. So you're gonna go out like that.
I don't wanna tear it.
Don't tear it too badly, but if you get a couple, we'll fix it. But keep it out here, because we want, what we want is a strong center. We want all of the, the strength to be here, because when you put the sauce and the cheese and topping, it's heavy. You don't want it to fall apart in the oven.
Correct.
And then we want that thin New York-style crust.
Okay.
So see if you can use both hands and kind of wax on, wax off Mr. Miyagi at the top. And if you look at this flower, see how we're not a circle anymore?
Right.
So we wanna make the flower kind of the same. Keep it the same. Keep it in a circle. You'll have a perfect circle when you make a perfect pizza, a flower outline.
Am I doing the right thing here?
Yeah, yeah, you're doing it, but just don't be scared to stretch it.
Yeah, it feels like I'm gonna tear it.
Move your hands apart. Yes, yes, in a motion. Yeah, there you go. Yep, you're doing good.
Good enough? Is that big enough?
You're doing good. Nah, we're gonna go a little bit larger.
Okay.
Nice job, Austin. Are you sure you've not done this before?
No, no.
Not even the house, not the backyard?
I used to work in a lot of restaurants, though, I'll tell you that much.
Yeah? Where was that?
Mostly serving tables. I did some back of the house at PF Chang's.
Where?
So that's why when my brother and I moved in together, all we ate was Chinese food.
Because that all you cooked or that's all you ordered?
No, I cooked. I was basically the, when my brother and I were roommates, I was basically the housewife. I did all the cleaning, all the cooking, all the laundry.
Okay.
This was many years ago. It was before we found our own wives.
There you go. All right, let me help you there. So just finish it right there. See, I'm not ruining it. You're not gonna hurt it.
Oh, yeah, that's very aggressive.
Not really. It's still soft. So you see all that gluten? All that's gluten.
Wow, okay.
So that's the yeast. The yeast is, is alive, and it's gluten. So now, this is the fun thing. This is, is this what you wanna do?
Yeah, 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 like the Italian guys.
Let's, let's fix that right there. So what you're gonna do here is, you're gonna hold the dough. You're not gonna use these six fingers. You're gonna collapse these six fingers, and you're just gonna have your two fingers here. But you're gonna rest the dough. We got a real order. We'll get out of your way in just a minute. You're gonna collapse the, the fingers, and you're gonna rest the dough here and here. Your nails are not gonna touch the dough.
Okay.
So if you look, you kind of see how my, my thumb isn't touching the dough, my nail's not touching the dough.
Correct.
And then when I need to stretch, I'm gonna pull out like that and flip it. Okay? So go ahead. We're only gonna do this about one time.
Yeah.
So keep those fingers in, let it rest very loosely. You're doing good. And then just kind of stretch it as you flip it. There you go. One more time, one more time, one more time, one more time. Good job. All right, that's good enough. So, nice job. So this is a 12-inch pie, but it's a lot bigger than 12 inches.
Yeah, it's a little, a little aggressive on the inches.
So we're gonna, we're gonna get, uh, we're gonna get the air bubbles out, make sure we have enough dough to slide it for you into the oven.
Yeah, fix it up. First and the job, you know, you gotta take it easy on me.
No hazing. All right, so now what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take some, some sauce. Can you give me the black handle, please? For the small? So we're gonna take this sauce.
Like a whole ladle for 12 inches?
No, but this is stretched a little bit more, so that's why I'm putting a little bit more in there.
A little extra.
So what you're gonna do is.
I like a lot of sauce, you know?
Okay, cool, me too. So pour all of this into the center, all of it. Get it all out in the center, and then.
Right into the center and just dump it?
Right, dump all of it right there. Thank you. And now what you're gonna do is, you're gonna take the center point, put the center point right down, and you're just gonna circular, get all that sauce all the way around.
Okay.
And then you want one knuckle.
Like a Fibonacci?
Exactly. One knuckle, you just want one knuckle.
Distance.
Of, of no sauce. But it's that same center point, so you can go back into that center and get that out of there.
It's like I'm spreading too thin, no?
No.
Wow.
Because we're not a perfect circle, that's why we have the distances over here.
Making up some difference. You think that's enough sauce for guys like me and you?
We could do more, just for a little bit larger, but we're gonna, we're gonna put it, I'm gonna help you with that.
Yeah, now we're talking. Is that the same sauce you use for mozzarella sticks?
No.
Oh, really?
Yeah, no, no, no. So we have, we use four different kinds of tomatoes in here.
Really?
Yeah. If you wanna do that, I'll tell you about the tomatoes. So we use four different kinds of tomatoes. They're all from a family farm in California. They're all picked peak of harvest. We're really, really selective and conscious about our ingredients, and one of the guiding principles is that if, I'm not gonna feed it to my children, I'm not gonna feed it to yours.
Right.
So we're, we're very proud of our ingredients and the, and the source of our ingredients. Let's get some more over here. Remember, we just want one singular knuckle.
Right.
And you're not gonna, as long as you don't get it on the wood, you'll be fine. So this is good over here, here, all good.
So are the mushrooms native to like Italy or something like that or no?
Not the mushrooms.
It's not a thing. Not, I didn't mean to say mushrooms. I was thinking about what toppings I want. The tomatoes.
The tomatoes are from California.
California.
Yeah, core, uh, I can't do them justice, but it's the Cort, Cortes Stapi family. It's their family farm. It's been in their family for a couple generations.
Right.
And the, the cheese that we use, you're good. Let me put it right there. The cheese that we use is from a dairy cooperative in Wisconsin. So it's 38 family farms that come together to create the cooperative. They're their first customer outside of the Great Lakes region, since they've had more customers in our area. But there's like two ingredients. It's like milk, salt, I guess, and cream. That would be three ingredients, but cream is milk. That's it. We don't have any kicking agents. There's no potato starch. There's no silica. There's nothing. There's no kicking agents at all.
Okay.
So what we're gonna do here is, we're gonna take a scoop.
So you do, it's not Papa John's where they put the toppings first. Toppings go on the top. I always thought that was a little weird, because they're called toppings.
I didn't know that. I know Papa John's did that.
Papa John's, yeah, it's always like under.
Yeah, well, that's why you don't order from there anymore, right?
Well, I only order from Playa Pizza. This is West Orange County. What are you talking about?
So take your hand, and you're gonna use your hand as a guide, because, because this is product. And if you've been to the grocery store lately, it's expensive.
Yes, correct.
We're gonna make sure that the product stays on the pie and not on the countertop.
Right.
So if you look at the beautiful countertop, make a left for us, there's no product anywhere. So you're gonna shake it, and you kind of use this as your guide. Same concept applies, outside to inside.
All right.
And don't be shy. Come, come to the edge.
Okay, come to the edge.
Yeah, that's what your hand is for. Your hand is to stop it from flying off the pie.
Yeah. Okay.
What do you like on your pizza?
I like mushrooms, onions, and then, you know, maybe we do something like a meat.
Mushrooms, onions, and a meat?
Yeah.
No, one of the other candidates did the exact same thing.
Like a soft meat.
Do you wanna do the same thing as another candidate?
They did that, uh, what meat did they do?
Mushrooms, onions, and I think, what did we do? Pepperoni? I don't remember.
Nah, we don't eat pepperoni.
Come, come over here with the cheese.
Well, that wasn't Nicole Wilson, was it?
No. You, you, you used the name of the other candidate, not me. I don't.
Oh, that's all right.
Everyone's time. The only person I talk about is them. I haven't mentioned any candidate in anybody's, in anybody's interview. Well, there's no reason to be afraid. So we're all, we're all just trying to serve, right?
Absolutely. Totally true.
So come over here, and let's, uh, let's take a look at these toppings. So you said some mushrooms?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, so you can palm them and put on, again, outside to inside.
Outside to inside. The wife doesn't like the mushrooms, so when I share, I can't get mushrooms.
So you wanna do mushrooms on half and just keep it like you're at home?
Yeah, that's great. What a, that's a really thoughtful thing you just said.
All right, and then you said, what else did you want?
Onions.
Onions. We got some onions right there.
Great.
Oh, I remember what it was. It was pepperoni, and it was at my suggestion. Have you ever had a pepperoni pepper?
Well, have you, you kind of break this apart?
You can, however you like it.
Okay, Bishop!
Hey, it's Uncle Dave. You're on camera, Uncle Dave. We're recording, we're recording.
Wow, what a special treat here. Listen, I'm making the pizza. I'm doing it all right.
Well, special treat.
This is my, this is, this is my backup plan. If I, if I lose the election, I'm gonna work here.
I'm hiring.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have a job.
He's great, Austin.
Yeah, he's great.
Yeah.
We love it. All right.
All right, what else would you like?
Well, she likes onions on the whole thing. Maybe I move it around a little bit.
Now we're gonna, we're gonna have stinky breath during our interview.
Oh, I didn't think of that. That's all right. No live studio audience.
All right, anything else? You want any?
Yeah, we need to, we need to mix it up. What do we got here?
That is some Italian sausage. It's sweet Italian sausage, and it's called a bias cut.
Very much done. Why is that bias, like the media?
No, it's, it's on the, uh, it's, it's on a bias.
Oh, okay. Not like biased media?
No.
Which we don't have in West Orange County, of course.
We don't. We really don't.
Very good media.
We've got great, we've got great reporters here. My favorite are some of our local reporters that actually let us know. You know, unfortunately, media is consolidated and.
Yep. We got Noreen with Vox Populi and Orange Observer, all kinds of things, Orlando Sentinel.
Annabelle Sykes.
I put way too much meat.
You're gonna eat it. Annabelle Sykes, my favorite reporter in the world.
Yeah, exactly.
We also have Amy, Amy Queensberry.
She's amazing.
So Amy does good work, and I love our local media. I made Channel 6 here last night.
Wow, that's awesome.
All right, so now what we're gonna do is, they're the fourth estate, Austin. They keep our politicians honest. So we're gonna shake it and make sure that it moves, which it is. And you notice that this is rotating like a carousel. This oven's from Italy. It's absolutely gorgeous.
Wow.
We were the only one in the United States of this size and design. Until recently, I heard there's one in Texas now.
Wow.
And it came over in like a tinier, a smaller tractor trailer, and then they pulled it off and built it on site.
Holy smokes. So is it a fast cooking? It does faster than usual?
This thing goes over 1,000 degrees easily. So it's gonna take six minutes. We do New York-style, not Neapolitan-style, but the oven represents the sun. Our floor represents the sand. Our walls are the ocean. This is the sun and the sun rays. And then our, our air conditioning is the clouds, and our speakers, I'm sorry, air conditioning's the sky, and the speakers are the clouds.
Now, I don't wanna call any other candidates out, but I heard that my good friend Kyle, he had a little trouble. Maybe he was a little burnt, so I gotta watch carefully. Kyle Gowdy for School Board, I heard burnt the pizza.
He did, he did, but he recovered very well. I thought it was hilarious. He said his pizza is like the job that he's gonna do, which is well done.
Well done in the end.
So go ahead, go ahead, put this on, and then kind of like the table, when you're impressing your wife on that first date, you're gonna pull the, pull the.
Right, the sheet, the.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, that's the purpose. Otherwise, the pizza's gonna go everywhere.
I've seen some social media fails on this, so.
Yeah, you ready?
I've been warming up.
Put it in there, and you're not going like an airplane, so leave it flat. So go. Great job. That's great. Now hit that timer down, that six-minute timer.
Hit it down?
Yep, six-minute timer.
Down like that?
There you go, yep.
Oh, that did it. Oh, okay. I didn't feel like a, any resistance.
There you go. So we got six minutes.
The right one, you know? That'd be bad.
All right, right here.
Here we go. Looks great. Exactly how I imagined.
It does look good.
Yeah.
All right, so now we're gonna cut it.
Can I shovel here?
So pay attention, because nobody has paid attention yet.
Okay.
You're gonna do a line down the center.
Yeah.
And an X.
And an X. Line, X, got it.
Line and X.
I definitely have a. All right. First candidate, pay attention. Okay?
No, no, you moved it.
What are you talking about? You moved it?
You, you, you turned it.
Oh, it'd be good to just put it back.
Put it back. Now make an X.
Now make an X, okay. All right. Is this like a trick or something?
No, because everybody ends up making eight slices out of what's supposed to be a six-slice pie, because they're not listening, and then I'm like.
So I did it. I listened.
You did it.
First candidate.
That's right.
In 2024, to listen to the pizza instructions.
You can put it right here. All right, hold it up.
Okay, hold it up. There we go.
Austin Arthur, did you have fun making the pizza?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that was awesome. That was really a good deal there.
It looks good. I gotta be honest with you. It, it looks good. Your sauce to cheese ratio is good. Your crust is perfect.
Thank you.
Crust line's perfect. We did a little extra sauce like you liked.
Yeah.
So let's dig in, man. Take your mushroom, and I'll take one without mushroom. How about, how about that?
You'd be my wife.
Okay.
No mushrooms. Okay, these are big slices. Look at that.
This is good. Look at that.
Folding is the best practice.
Well, you gotta test the flop.
Oh, sorry.
So your flop.
Your flop. It's pretty, it's pretty.
That's good. All right, cheers. Enjoy.
That's why I wear a hat when you have a eating problem in front of people, is just go like that. Take care of business.
You know, Austin, I think it's a good flavor combination. I think the onions are caramelized just enough that it, it, it's good. I like it. Good job. And this is what you normally always order?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, mushroom and onion and some protein sometimes.
Cool.
Best pizza in West Orange County, right here in Horizon West.
That's right. Well, good, man. Well, um, I just wanna say off the bat that we, um, we're doing this to have fun. We're doing this to, to let people know that our neighbors are stepping forward to serve and that everyone is a neighbor. You know, there, these are all nonpartisan positions that we're doing, which means that there's no policy agenda set by a national party or a state party, that the candidates are not, to not be judged by any political affiliation that you may know, because they don't advertise their political affiliation, because these are small, local community leadership roles. Austin agreed to sit down and spend time this afternoon. He could be with his family, but he's here. We appreciate that, so thank you for that. We have no agenda. We have no timer. I have no pre-written questions. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna start by just saying that I've known Austin for six, seven years. My kids have been going to his business for monthly for that long. But we haven't spoken, and we kept it that way on purpose, so that we can just talk and have an open conversation. And I'm gonna open with the question I've asked everybody, which is, who are you? I know who you are, but who are you? Where are you from? Where are you educated? Where, what's your story, and why should we vote for you?
Sure. So my name's Austin Arthur. I'm running for Orange County Commissioner District One. It's the west side of the county, kind of everything that's south and west of both Apopka and Akoi. So it includes Gothel all the way on down in Horizon West, Windermere, Winter Garden, even down to Hunter's Creek in Williamsburg, Dr. Phillips, all of it. But for me, I live in downtown Winter Garden with my wife and three kids. You know, we have a 10-year-old girl, a five-year-old girl, and a three-year-old boy.
Wow.
And we don't have a dog, but we do have a golf cart. So we love to, to be downtown Winter Garden. On Sundays, we go to church, and we go to lunch after, and then we kind of cruise around and just hang out together. That's, that's our sacred day to be together.
Cool.
And I started my journey a little bit, you know, a little crazy. I was in a rock band, got into plenty of trouble.
Where'd you grow up?
I grew up in Miami.
Okay.
Yeah, so grew up in Miami, moved here probably about 16 or 17 years ago now. And my wife's born and raised in West Orange County. So she, you know, she remembers what it was like. She'll say, I remember before you were here, it was all orange goes, and you know. So she remembers all the changes and knows the changes, even, even since I've been to Orange County, you know, over 15 years. Seen massive changes, a lot of development.
Sure.
But I started, I was in a rock band touring the country.
Would you play?
Played the drums. You know, most people don't ask me that.
I, I, I played the drums when I was in middle school.
That's right. I think you've mentioned that a long time ago. Yeah, so I played the drums. Wasn't, obviously wasn't working out good. So I told my dad, I'm like, Dad, I wanna be an entrepreneur. That's what I wanna do. And he's like, you know, that's real nice, but that's not my job, so go ahead and get yourself a real job. I became a firefighter, paramedic, and I was doing that, hatching little business plans with my brother, who's always been my best friend.
Where were you a firefighter, paramedic?
Apopka.
Oh, really?
Yeah, in Winter Park. I was with Winter Park, Florida Hospital as a medic.
Did you, uh, did you go to Florida State Fire College?
Well, down in Miami-Dade.
Oh, Miami-Dade? Very cool.
Yeah, and then Valencia for paramedic school.
Cool.
So, yeah, and it was great. I loved it. I mean, I totally loved it, but I was trying to do both. Once we launched, we launched the marketing firm, we would eventually launch Gymnastics USA, which is right in Winter Garden. It's actually now the biggest gymnastics center in the state of Florida, 50,000 square feet. But the businesses just got too busy, so I couldn't continue to do both. Xander, the same, he was a paramedic, worked with Orlando Health. And so we stopped our paramedic firefighter jobs and just focused solely on the business. And, you know, it wasn't always easy. We had plenty of ups and downs, like any small business. It's, it's not, it's not as glamorous as it looks or in the movies when you have a success story. It's like five minutes is the trouble, and then it's all of a sudden there, and the beautiful part of it. It's actually not like that. It's very difficult, you know? So we persevered and grew the gym over time. It wasn't the biggest gym in the state of Florida at the beginning. It was half of what it is now.
Yeah, I remember that. I remember when you expanded.
Expanded, yeah, three different expansions. We, we did it three different times. And so, yeah, and it's, and it's been a blessing, and we've had great response from the community. So with that, the businesses started to become more autonomous over time. So, you know, you either kind of pour it back into the business and grow it, grow it, grow it, which is great. A lot of entrepreneurs do that. Or you just kind of maybe scale back on that and get things that you're passionate about and start to get involved with them. For my brother, it was coaching high-level gymnastics. So Xander started to get back into coaching, and he does that kind of as his passion today at the gym, and he has national champions. For me, I love people. I'm a people person, so I just started to get more involved in the community.
You're not a tumbler?
I'm not a tumbler? No, I, he was the good gymnast. It was kind of how it worked. I mean, we were both very much involved in the business formation, but more it was my side was the business aspect, where his side was building the curriculum and the way to coach and all these kind of training programs and stuff. So, yeah, he was always the great gymnast. But, so I started to get more involved in the community. I started to volunteer for different organizations, like Habitat for Humanity, for example, would eventually get asked on the board, and now I serve on 12 community boards, Habitat for Humanity, Eight Waves Children and Family Services, Challenge 22, the end veteran suicide, which I'm a big supporter of. And so, and several others. That's kind of how I started on this journey. I do a lot of work in the historic East Winter Garden neighborhood, which is our minority neighborhood, you know, under-resourced neighborhood, built out of segregation. And generations later, they're still suffering from those sins. And so doing work in those communities and for the community, you start to do a lot of work in conjunction with local government. And so I had great municipality success with Windermere and Winter Garden, Akoi, Oakland, just tremendous success. But I had a lot of struggles with Orange County, you know? And that's when it kind of got on my radar, and I said, man, we just gotta do things a little differently in, in terms of the way we're, we're leading things here. So I started to look for other people to run, of course. When you got a problem, you try to find somebody else to solve it. So I was trying to get other people to run. I said, you gotta run and be the next commissioner. You'd be great, you'd be great. They got annoyed with me, and eventually you said, why don't you do it then, if you're so passionate about it? So I talked to my mom, I talked to my wife, I talked to my brothers, my best friend, my business partner, and my pastor. And that basically formulates the Board of Directors for Austin Arthur's life. And so they kind of all agreed that I should do it and that I should take the leap. And so we made some changes in the business to make this possible, because I'm I'm doing this full-time. And that's been since February. Now, that's February of two thousand twenty-three. So this has been a long haul. Really, it's been a two-year journey, once you think about the 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 exploration process and everything. And so it's 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 been a lot, but um, yeah, that's a that's a.
So you you declared really early, like you said, of two years.
I did.
And you've been campaigning full-time? I didn't know that you.
Full-time.
Wow.
And when I say full-time, you know, when I say full-time, forty hours to me is part-time. You know, I'm talking sixty hours a week on the campaign trail, and then I dedicate about twenty hours a week to the business, the marketing primarily. And when I say that, to clarify, it's a lot of the stuff I was already doing, you know? Now I just put in the classification of campaign because it's community stuff. And that's what I believe is the role, you know, a lot of the role, of course. You know, you sit on the board and we'll get into those kind of things, but it's being with the community. So when I say sixty hours a week, I I mean pouring into the community that way, because this time I wear a hat doing it. And it says Austin Arthur for Orange County Commissioner. Uh, but yeah, it's totally full-time for me since February two thousand twenty-three.
Wow, I didn't realize that you've been, I didn't realize you were campaigning full-time. I had no idea. I know you, I know you that you declared pretty early, but I didn't realize that 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 was. So, um, all right, so you mentioned a lot of work and a lot of community organizations. What's your favorite one?
You really think I'm going to answer a question like that?
That's not controversial.
No, I I really don't have a favorite.
Okay, let's let me back the structure up. Let me back the structure of the question up then. What's your favorite?
All my executive directors are listening to this thing.
No, no, no. What what's your, what, well, I mean, you mentioned that, you know, I I've I got involved with Challenge Twenty Two earlier during the during the pandemic. But, you know, my favorite organization that I'm involved with is Comson Child Group, you know, so that's what I mean. So is there one that you?
Well, I mean, I think that one that's very relevant to what we're doing would be West Orange Habitat for Humanity, because of course we face a housing crisis in Orange County. And so I'm a big, I'm a big proponent of single-family housing. I love single-family housing. But at the same time, it's a balance, and that's with everything in government and leadership. It's a balance, because we need multifamily housing too. We need it, you know? So.
But what about Habitat drives you?
Well, because I believe in homeownership. I really do. I think that that's transformational for lives. It's it gives people dignity to own a home, and it's not just the individual. It's not just the homeowner themselves. It's the children and the children's children. It creates generational change, generational wealth. And I believe that that's a key component to help get people out of a a negative cycle, you know, a generational cycle. It's not the only thing, and you gotta do it right. It's not just housing first, where you're sticking them in a house and you hope it goes well. No, you gotta come alongside them and you gotta come alongside them before they get into the house to make sure they're prepared, that they know how to keep the house, they know how to run the house, they know how to balance a checkbook. And 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 this is the important part.
And that's a part of the Habitat curriculum, if you will, right? In order to earn the home, folks have to take those courses.
Exactly. Now, we don't have any anchovies here, but we know about feeding fish, feeding with the fish. You don't, you don't feed a man a fish. You teach him how to fish, and that's what Habitat is all about, you know? We don't give away homes with Habitat for Humanity. It's a misconception. And the other misconception is that Jimmy Carter did not invent Habitat for Humanity, but he certainly popularized it.
Kept it alive.
Like, kept it alive and and transformed it, you know? That was his kind of choice after his presidency to focus on Habitat, and we're all benefactors benefactors of that, because he really just made it what it is today in so many, so many ways. So with Habitat, you know, you have to pay it into a mortgage, you have to pay a down payment. It's an interest-free mortgage. Habitat for Humanity is actually the holders of those mortgages. They are interest-free. And so, um, you know, it's it's not a giveaway. It's certainly a merit-based program, and that's how you transform lives.
How many Habitat homes are there in West Orange?
Well, in West Orange County, with our Habitat for Humanity, there's several dozen, about four dozen.
Really? And are they all in the same area?
Been around for thirty years. A little spread out. We've we've been focusing a lot on the historic East Winter Garden community. We have some in Oakland and we're gonna be doing some in Akoi, so it's not exclusive to that area.
So they're not like housing developments?
They're not housing development. We will do, we will do a few at a time. We just finished one that's of four different homes. And then we have three more coming online in the group, kind of like a little micro-community, if you will, next to each other. But not, but but single-family. It is single-family.
Nice. That's very nice. So there's over forty families right now, and you said it's been going on here for over forty years?
Thirty years.
Thirty years and forty, so.
Started in Oakland, actually. The Oakland Presbyterian Church started a wonderful group over there, and it's been going on and thriving since. And we have the Ree Store now in West Orange County, right by this huge gymnastics center, this wonderful place called Gymnastics USA. And it's right there where you can go and you can drop off things, kind of like a Goodwill, but ten times better, because it's Habitat for Humanity, and we love Habitat for Humanity. And you drop off stuff and they'll, we'll sell it for the cause and to make sure we get people into homes.
That's great. Very nice. So you mentioned a lot there.
Yeah.
Sounds like you've been practicing for two years. You know, I haven't, we haven't gotten that fast into policy in any of these interviews I've done with people.
It's easy for me to talk.
It's it's uh, it's been much more casual for much more longer, so you threw a lot at me when it came to.
We gotta get the folks the information.
When it came to policy, well, you know, I'm trying to make you a human being and not, and I'm trying to make everyone else a human being and 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 make sure that the dysfunction of national politics and even state politics does not creep into our community.
Right.
And and that's why.
Well, it has, by the way. You should know that it has, and that's part of the reason I'm running.
So we'll, then we'll get to that. So what I want to make sure is that, you know, and the reason why on this round or this iteration, I'm focusing on nonpartisan only is is uh, is to make sure that, you know, people, I think the largest political party in our area is no political party as far as registered voters go, I think. You probably know.
Yeah, I do. I don't want to tell my opponent all the secrets. Just kidding.
Stop talking about your opponent.
Well, this is what makes it fun. Nothing nasty, though. Only fun, only fun.
Okay. So we, uh, you know, so I want to make sure that 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 people want to be educated and they want to be proud to vote. I've never, I've never missed an election since the day I was eighteen. It's part of the nerdy part of me. I feel as though we live in the greatest country in the face of the earth and that, you know, our country is only as good as the people who represent us. And for me, I've always taken the approach to really, really, really pay attention and focus on local politics. National politics is a circus. Um, national politics is fed to us by a national media. We talked earlier about our local media, who I'm really grateful for. But local voters, the the further, the closer you get to home, the less people know. The less people know who's representing them, you know? People can name the president, fewer people can name the vice president, fewer people can name their senators, fewer people can name their congressman, and then you go all the way down to mayor and you go all the way, all the way down to county commissioner, you even go down to Soil and Water Conservation District.
Right, well, sure.
Nobody knows. They don't know who they are or what they do, but these are people that have actual effects on their day-to-day lives, more so than the clowns in Washington. So what is the position of a Orange County Commissioner? What does that do?
Yeah, right. So the Orange County Commissioner does a few things. I mean, obviously, a big part of it is land use. What are we going to be putting on a certain plot of land? What is the plan to, um, you know, for the development and the growth? That's a major part of it, and that's probably the most controversial. Also constituent services, you know, when a constituent has an issue, they come to the county commissioner and they need to be the liaison to the staff, to the various programs and resources to get people help in the county at the county level. And when we say county, if you live in a city, you're still in the county. A lot of people aren't too sure about that. But say you live in the city of Winter Garden or the town of Windermere or the town of Oakland, you are still a county resident. The county commissioner is still your commissioner and they.
On county issues, because you have city issues that your city commissioner
That's correct.
would be responsible for on that city. So
Exactly.
we've got the town of Oakland, we've got the city of Winter Garden, Akoi's not in this district anymore. We have the town of Windermere, any other municipalities within District One.
Not within District One.
So it's it's Oakland, Winter Garden, and Windermere. And the rest is the county.
The rest is the county.
So those folks who have city of Winter Garden, because we're in Horizon West and we're in a unique spot, because right over there is Lake Buena Vista. We are Winter Garden. I'm sorry, we are um, uh, we are Windermere.
Right.
To the left of, I mean, we're right here. So we have Lake Buena Vista, across the street, Walt Disney World. We have Orlando right as soon as you hit the trees. This side of the road is Windermere, and right down there is Winter Garden. But that's not the city or the town, so that is the district. So those folks do not have a city commissioner, if you will.
Correct.
So that's all county.
Yeah.
So the county commissioner, you mentioned land use, you mentioned constituent services, county departments.
Yes, correct. And and real quick, before I continue on that, so I'll finish it, but it's a great topic that a lot of people are confused on. And to be honest, maybe it's a lot of the realtors making people confused on purpose, because when you say you're in Windermere, but you're not in the town of Windermere, you are not in Windermere at all.
Correct.
This is a zip code thing.
You are served by the Windermere postal.
Exactly. Same thing for the Winter Garden. So, you know, it it's important to know that, because I know my my good friend, a mentor of mine, Mayor John Reese, he gets a lot of calls from folks in Horizon West.
That's right.
Who mean well, and he's like, ma'am, you gotta call the commissioner of Orange County. So, um, yeah, that's important for folks to know, to to get that map and to really know if you're within the municipality or if you're unincorporated in Orange County. So the other aspects are the budget, right? You gotta, you got a huge budget in Orange County. You gotta fund that. You gotta fund the sheriffs, the department, the firefighters. These are, these are very critical aspects, and then they they run their own departments from there, but you fund their their budget. The other big one, and I think the most serious one, if you think about it, is really the lawmakers. Now, we don't call them laws locally. We call them ordinances, but effectively they're laws, they're local laws, and that comes from your your county commission.
Very nice. All right, so um, we talked land use. You mentioned land use. We have, there's a map here. It's off-camera. Um, there
Yes.
There's a map right over there of our district. What are each one of those little boxes on the map? And if you give me that file, I'll put it on the screen.
Okay, great, yeah.
So what what are those boxes on that?
Those are precincts. There's over thirty precincts.
So those are voting precincts?
Those are voting precincts. So that map.
And not that map.
But it's an interesting thing for the folks, because we're talking about politics. So this is how people are divided in terms of the where they're, where they vote, you know? And and not even necessarily, a precinct doesn't mean a polling place, but what we do is.
It doesn't, okay. So tell me more, because that's why I just said maybe not that map.
So for example, in in the city of Winter Garden, just to give you an example, they have multiple precincts at one polling place.
Okay.
If that makes sense. So somebody might be precinct one oh four, somebody else is one oh six, but they vote at the same town center.
What does that mean for them?
It doesn't mean all that much. It's more for people that are really analyzing things to really know. It's just a location.
Like a postal routes.
I mean, yeah, essentially, yeah, that's right. But we look at that from a candidate standpoint, to give you a little bit of the behind the the scenes work. We look at that from a candidate standpoint to say, okay, let's group these folks regionally over here by these precincts, these folks regionally over here with these precincts, because they have different issues. West Orange County is huge. District One has quarter million residents. So the folks in Hunter's Creek, well, they really aren't concerned about the same thing as the folks in Oakland.
They they don't care about Avalon Run.
Yeah, exactly. That's right. Folks in.
We don't care about John and Parkway.
Correct. That's exactly right. So that's important for us as candidates. What we do is we break it down and we say, okay, these guys are kind of in this group of issues that they're concerned about. So when I go there, I'm meeting them where they're at. I'm talking about the issues that are relevant to them. I'm certainly not talking about national politics, and I'm not talking about things that are happening on the other side of the district, you know? We can talk about it if they're interested, but I want to make sure I'm 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 talking about the things that that they are concerned about, that they want me to be having eyes on as we enter into this.
So how many county commissioner districts are there?
So there's six county commissioner districts. So that means that there's six votes on everything, plus the mayor, so seven votes total. Six from commissioners, one from the mayor. And the mayor is the CEO of the county as well. It's a little bit of a different thing. He's a strong mayor, they call him. And so we don't have too much of that. Apopka has a strong mayor, also pretty rare these days. You know, you had the old idea of the guy with the top hat and he's the mayor and he's got a big belly.
Lockdown entry USA.
Those are typically portraying like strong mayors, like he's really the boss and he can do whatever he wants. That's not how it typically is in government these days. You know, they've they've gone to a form of city management government where they have a.
Bureaucrat, a hired bureaucrat, a hired bureaucrat.
Sure, a hired manager to 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 run the municipality or even the county. So, but Orange County is unique is that they have one of those, and they also have a strong mayor, meaning the CEO of the county is the mayor, so.
All right, so you brought up a lot. I want to ask you some questions that I've been asking everybody. Because we have a unique situation in Orange County that with our Charter Review Commission, we have an opportunity to expand the size of the commission because of that rapid growth in our area. So it's on the November ballot, correct?
That's correct.
So it's on the November ballot, and we have the opportunity to expand by two more seats?
Correct.
So it'll be a total of nine. So it'll be seven districts and one mayor.
It'll be eight districts and one mayor.
Eight districts, eight districts, sorry. So seven, yeah, it could be math. Eight districts and one mayor. Eight districts and one mayor. Do you support that?
No.
You don't support that?
No, I don't support that.
Okay, how come you don't support that?
So it's not a, it's not an absolute never thing for me. You know, I understand the need to eventually potentially expand that commission because our growth is so fast, but there's a couple of problems with it. And 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 one of the main ones is we've just experienced a lot of radical change on our, on the way our commission is being ran in terms of the support it's receiving. So this past couple of years, they've received more staff members, meaning each commissioner has received more resources to put on more staff members. So they have more help. The other thing that they have more of is more pay. They just voted to increase their pay rate by twenty-five percent. So that was done, so they have more pay. And now the third idea now is to get more help, get more pay, and then now we're going to take away more work, so that's actually going to reduce their work in theory by, what, twenty-six, twenty-seven percent? So that's just kind of crazy to me. That's not, we would never do that in the private sector, ever. You would make small changes at a time, incremental, see how they go, and then move on from there.
How long have we had six districts?
Oh, for, I believe it's for a very long time. I don't know if there's been an expansion since the charter.
So what would it take for you to agree to having two more districts?
Sure. So as you know, there was a whole committee on this that spent hours and hours and hours researching.
Citizen community, citizen.
That's right, citizen, yeah.
What are they called? The Charter Review.
Charter Review Board, that's right, that's right. So the Charter Review Board met on it. They talked about it a lot. And then they had basically a committee that went off, a few of them went off, and studied these issues and this sort of thing. So there's a lot to look at. I'm not prepared to make a statement on what the metric should be, but I believe there should be a metric. I believe it should be laid out with a system and a process saying, this amount means this, this amount means that, something predictable. And so I would be in support of that potentially.
And that's not in the charter? They're they don't have a formula?
Uh, no, no, no.
So it just says, create new commission.
That's right, and it would have to be by a charter member vote. The people would have to okay it, which is going to happen in November.
Wouldn't that give us a closer, closer access and more um, warm, warm relationship with those people that are making those decisions for us?
It's a great point you just made. That's why I said I'm not absolutely against it. I'm I'm against it right now. I think it's wrong right now. I think it's the wrong decision now for the reasons I just described.
And we just talked about it. I don't know what's going on on John Young, and they don't know what's going on on Avalon. But wouldn't, if I could have two, well, not even two, I wouldn't have two, we'd be splitting responsibility. If I could have a more, we could cut that map in half and make it more, uh, you know, accountable. That would be, I would think that would be a good thing.
So so all the reasons I'm against it, I told you, they're situational. They're about people, the commissioner's just getting a huge pay raise. They're about commissioners just getting more help, and they're, and and then this is part of the reason why I think we need to see how that goes before we just now.
When did they get the raise and when did they get more help?
They got it all within the past year, year and a half, I believe it was. The pay was very recent, as you probably know, within this year.
I don't know.
Okay, well, it was within the year, within a twelve-month period, I believe.
And it's, it happened already?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, it's in effect.
Did our commissioner vote for a raise for themselves?
Well, you asked me the question. I'll answer it fairly. So our commissioner voted for the staff to draft up the um, rules and how it worked, the basically the policy of of the twenty-five percent pay raise. So she was for it. She voted yes.
To the.
To to draft it up, for the staff to draft it up. So it's kind of almost a procedural technicality when you get to that point in the stage. You have to get the staff, you have to agree, you do the big debate on on the issue. Then the staff's going to have to take some some action, draft it up. So then you send them off to do that. Typically, okay, everybody that voted yes is going to vote the same way.
And that's that unique situation to where we were talking earlier, where we have a strong mayor, but we also have staff that, you know, the mayor's not there doing the work. The staff is doing the work.
Well, sure, yeah.
Like, like the, we'll use the city of Winter Garden, for example. The city of Winter Garden has the 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 city commission, and then they have the staff, and the commission directs the staff to do the work and bring it back to them. Same same theory, correct? I'm asking.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so same theory, okay. So the the board was it, um, so they informed the staff.
So they told the staff.
Find the facts and come back.
No, 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 no. Very important difference. They already did that, and this is very important. They already did that part of it. They found the facts. They made the decision, but they have to get the staff to technically write it on paper now. Write the rules out. What's the policies and procedures, so to speak? Write it out. So they went back, here's, we did exactly what you asked us to do. And then the votes came, they all matched. Everybody said what they originally said. Our commission was last to go and last minute. Now, what happens is all the votes, it was going to pass. It was already known. Our commission was there, pauses, says, well, the the mayor's not here, so I'm not comfortable voting without the mayor. So she voted no for it. But I don't understand why, because if the staff did exactly what you researched for and exactly what, but now you see everybody's going to vote it, it's going to pass no matter what the answer is. The answer is no, because the mayor's not there. Well, that happens all the time. That's very frequent, actually. You have a vice mayor that sits in the chair and the meetings run to not vote on an issue, any issue.
Why wasn't the mayor there?
Oh, I don't know. It's probably some personal issue, you know?
So the mayor didn't vote at all?
Nothing strange. No, no, the mayor didn't vote at all. Yeah. But so it, you know, I I I don't know if that's uh, something that you're alluding to, but.
No, it's it's not anything that I'm alluding to. It upsets me. It it really does upset me, and I know that we're supposed to be talking about your race, but when people.
I'll talk about anything.
When people who are, when people who are elected to make decisions on behalf of people who are working and that they don't show up for a vote, that really makes me angry.
You know.
So we're not talking about the mayor, though, but that's where that face came from.
I know he had his father pass away in the last two, two, a year and a half. It might have been related to that, because he doesn't miss that often, to be fair. And I'm no special pleader for the mayor, but I want to be fair.
He's done anyway, so it's not, you know, he's not running again.
Well, he's not running again, yeah.
So, you know, it's no attack on him, but in theory, I get very upset, you know, like Marco Rubio, when he misses votes or Rick Scott misses votes, or, you know, that stuff upsets me. That's why I made that face. It wasn't an illusion.
A lot of people are wondering, speaking of being upset, a lot of people are upset, and saying, well, why did you actually vote no at the last minute, even though you told them to do, they did exactly what you said to do? And she was in favor. It's kind of like the old Al Gore thing, you know? Before it, I was against, before, I was for it, before I was against it, and we need to know why, and that's a question that still hasn't been answered. And the mayor not being there is not a real answer. And we know that the vote was going to pass anyway.
All right, I'm going to play devil's advocate for a second here.
Please, we need it.
Because and 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 you can derail this if you want. And I'm going to use you as an example. And I'm going to use you on a mailer that you sent to my house. And in that mailer that you sent to my house, and you alluded to it earlier and you didn't go there, and I'm going to bring it to this topic right here, is you're a changed man.
Yeah, sure.
So how come that's not okay? To where if the staff brings data and then anyone on any topic finds the data, because Marco Rubio, and to his credit, and again, we're talking national, he's said that as well. He's like, look, I was presented with facts and I'm not an fader anymore. Why is that not okay?
Totally okay. Of course it's okay. Because of a technicality, there was more time for the human being to reflect and reconsider. That's true. It's a technicality. You understand that. She, they did exactly what she said.
Find facts and present them.
No, not find facts. That's a very important distinction. They already did that part of it. They duked it out. They debated.
So how was, what was the debate like? I'm loving this, because I love when politicians give themselves raises. So tell me more. So so what was the debate like?
It was, you know, it was heated. I mean, I'm not going to, you know, this is not a, what do they call it, crossfire, where I'm going to go analyze everything. But but I will tell you that there was a debate, there was lots of conversation. That part was over. Now it was just to adopt the very thing they were instructed to do.
You know what I'm going to do tonight, right?
You're going to go back and look at it.
I'm going to go watch the county commissioner meeting. I'm going to go watch the county commissioner, no, no, go watch the debate, because I want to see.
No, it's a good debate.
I want to see what was said in the debate. All right.
So, so the point being, you're right. People have the opportunity to change. And 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 since there was a lull, she could have had a change of heart, but that's not what she said. So you're you're giving her an excuse she didn't offer.
All right, so tell me.
The off, the the reason to not vote for it was because the mayor was absent, but she votes on things all the time when the mayor's absent. And so people are wondering, did you count the votes? Did you decide not to vote for it? Because within 10 minutes, guess what happened on social media? I did not vote for the pay raise. So that's a little weird. So, you know, I just have to ask that question and I'd like a real answer, because the answer given that the mayor's not there is not a real answer.
Are you going to ask that question on July 30th at the debate?
Yeah, it's appropriate. Look, I'm not nasty with Nicole. I don't believe in that. But we have to, I had to ask the questions. I have to show the contrast, because there's a reason why I'm asking people not to renew her contract, to use business terms. There's a reason. So I had to talk about these things. But I'm not going to dig up personal stuff. I'm not going to call her names, nothing like that.
Okay.
But I will discuss the things that I'm concerned about with performance. And this is one of them.
I love what you're saying right now. And I have, you know, as a business owner, that I don't have time. I'm not running for office.
Right.
So I don't have time to do that. So I love what you're saying, because it's a part of the spirit of what we're trying to do here with this just conversation. You said you're only going to hold the, the current commissioner to their record.
Correct.
Their public record. You're not going to go for personal, you're not going to go for
Never.
character assassination. You're not going to do any of that kind of stuff.
Nope.
Are you going to condone your supporters or any third parties to do that on your behalf at an arms-length distance?
I won't condone it. And where, where possible and appropriate, I'll ask for them to stop. And it's happened already.
You, okay.
Yes. And so there was a post that went up, um, that my opponent put up and it was a nice post. A post on social media, sorry, thank you. A social media post and, and it was a nice post. And somebody posted something that on there that I thought was personally hurtful. And I asked that person to remove it. And I appreciated their support. They did, actually. Not at first. So I actually went in and, and made a positive comment. And, um, I say that because I mean it. Does that mean that I'm going to go and police every little nasty comment on Facebook? That's not my position either. I don't expect that from Nicole.
Those people are representing your brand.
That's right. But something's particularly egregious, right? I will step in and I have. So, but if it's a small little, they're being a little annoying, you know? We got to run our campaign. We got to focus on our campaign. We got to focus on the issues, you know?
All right. Another issue that I want to talk about that I've asked everybody about, a couple of them.
I'm ready.
It's not a district, it's not a district issue, but it is a voter's issue.
Okay.
School half-cent renewal.
Yeah, I support it.
You do?
Yeah, of course. We need schools.
Everyone's supported it so far.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you're plugged in, most, most people I think do support it. That's why.
And I was chastised by, I was chastised by two of the, um, school board candidates, because I kept calling it a tax. And they're like, it's a renewal, it's a renewal. And I'm like, it's still a tax.
Yeah.
All right, so next one. Um, Orange County transportation tax, uh, increase.
Transportation tax increase?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, not an increase, but a, but a genesis of it, the creation of it, of a tax. You're right, right?
It's a tax increase on behalf of transportation.
Yeah, so.
And the mayor has tried to get it twice.
Twice, that's right.
For or against?
So, listen, I'm going to answer very quickly, don't worry. But I'm going to answer it my way. And, and it'll be a complete answer. You'll love it. I am tax adverse. And I think that anybody that's followed these two campaigns knows where do we stand in our, in our political spheres, okay? So I'm a low tax guy. I don't believe in high taxes. I certainly don't believe in ever increasing taxes. So I'm typically the guy that says no new tax, except when I would say it, I would mean it, unlike George Bush, I guess, but. So this thing though, is we have such a crisis with transportation in Orange County and it's growing crisis. We have liabilities that are coming online with Sun Rail that we're going to have to pay for. We have no funding source. The gas tax is ever depleting, because people are driving around in their Elon Musk cars more and more and they're working from home ever since COVID. That's ever increasing. So the gas tax is depleting. And that's one of the main revenue sources for these sorts of fundings. So we do have a crisis. We have to solve it. So I say, if we have to look to a new revenue stream, if we do, and of course that's debatable. But if we do, then I will support the, a consumption tax, as I like to call it, which is a sales tax. And the reason is, is because I don't believe in penalizing people for their success. So if we have to raise, uh, introduce a new tax, it should be a spinach tax based on your usage. And the other good reason for that is because then you get your tourists to pitch in on the roads that they're helping to tear apart. You know, we have failing roads in Orange County and it's terrible. Well, we need our tourist friends that we love to come here, because that's our economy. We love them. But we need them to chip in on that too. And that's one of the ways.
But aren't they in the tax, in the gas that they buy in their rental cars anyway?
Well, sure, but we just talked about how that's a failing, a failing source of revenue. So we have to address the issue. There's, there's something that has to be addressed here.
So you're for the.
So I was not for, I was not for the sale, the, the, the gas tax. I was just going to get to it. Well, I have a very public stance originally on the first one. Very public, you can find it right now. I was not for it coming back. I wa, I supported it, just like the mayor of Winter Garden, just like the mayor of Akoi, just like the mayor, the mayor of Windermere. And a lot of these guys are also, you have conservative mayors, you have Republican mayors, Democrat mayors, all in support of it. People that were really plugged in on this issue on the first go, they were pretty much, almost all of them were in support of it. And I supported it for the reasons I just described. We've got a crisis. I want tourists to help out. And I don't want people to be penalized because they're successful. So that goes to ad valorem taxes. I did not support it the second time because the people said very loud and clear, no, you don't come back in two years with the same plan.
Less than two years, right?
Less than two years with the same plan, right.
I was extremely against it.
Yeah.
Because there's not a single benefit to this area whatsoever. And I went to a, I went to a public meeting and I let the current commissioner know that. And, um, uh, on the second round, there was also nothing for us in this area whatsoever. It's all for the city of Orlando, downtown Orlando. Wasn't going to do anything for this area.
So I want to speak to that. That's exactly right. And it goes to the fact that we were very adverse on road widening projects in this district for some reason. And I think it's an ideological bent. Multimodal is very important. I believe in multimodal. That might be something that my grandkids can one day enjoy in Orange County, but that is a long-term solution. So when you're focusing all your energy on that, you're, you're setting us up, especially in District One, West Orange County, for failure. Because we need to fix our roads that are here, that are existence. And that does include some road widening. Now, I understand induced demand, all of that stuff. You can't widen your way out of the problem. I agree with that. But you've got to stop the bleeding. You have got to stop the bleeding. And in some cases, that's when things like road widening projects are necessary. So that, you're right, that, they didn't want to touch that and that was a problem. They had some money for the municipalities that would have helped, we understand. But I think that there needs to be, uh, if it comes back, when it comes back, we need to look at that. And we also need to look at the potential, just an idea, lowering the ad valorem a little bit to offset. If we really mean that we want the tourists to pay for it, then in exchange, say simultaneously, we're going to bump down your property taxes just a little bit in conjunction tied into this.
Doesn't that defeat the purpose though?
It doesn't defeat the purpose. No, you got to do the numbers. You're not going to get as much money as you would before. But at the same time, they just cut that penny tax down to a half tax to get it passed. So if we're willing to go down to a half tax, keep it a penny, okay, but lower the ad valorem, you're still going to win.
Okay, so, so a, a equal amount, so that it nets at half?
For, for our residents, so that they don't have, at the end of the day, when they could barely afford to put food on the table in Orange County, they can't afford to live where they work, we don't want their taxes going up. So this is a mechanism you can work in on that.
Wouldn't it, if we're lowering one and raising another, but aren't we, and, and this is from personal experience, aren't we going to then handcuff that money over there and deplete money? So if we're lowering ad valorem, we're taking from parks, we're taking from
Taking from the general fund.
From general fund. And so we're going to create a problem over here and solve a problem over here half, halfway with the marijuana.
Yeah. You're right. And that's why, to be literal, we can't solve this problem over pizza. It's going to take, it's going to take a lot of thinking. It's going to take committees. It's going to take research. This is not a simple thing, you know? This is a proposal, an idea. Everything starts with the genesis of an idea and then you get into the details. So we need to get into those details to see how it can work.
Austin, I got two more questions for you.
Okay.
One is you said multimodal, which triggered a memory in my brain, because I was watching on YouTube the county commission meeting when Disney was presenting their, um, uh, what do they call it? Workforce housing.
Yeah.
And I laughed out loud. And this is why, when you said multimodal, I remembered. Because one of the representatives from Disney, called it a multimodal center. And one of the commissioners, I don't remember which one, said, like, define that. What does that mean? We don't have bus service out there.
Right.
And they said scooters, the little like scooters. And I was laughing out loud at this lobbyist. I'm assuming they were lobbyists. I don't know who they were. But they were representing Disney's interest. And I laughed so loud at my house, like a crazy person, uh, because they called the little push scooters a multimodal transportation, part of multimodal transportation. The Disney housing complex is extremely controversial for our area.
Yes.
Would you have voted for or against it if you were sitting on the dais?
Okay, that was an unmitigated disaster. And if I was the commissioner, that is a vote that would have never come before the board. That's the bottom line.
Does the commissioners, do they determine what comes before the board? Educate me.
No, no, that's not, that's not expressly what I mean.
Okay.
What I mean is that this commissioner failed to work with Disney, failed to work with this organization to change the plan, to make it more palatable for the residents, to find a new location. How many meetings were had? We could sunshine.
I don't know, you tell me. No.
Zero, that's the answer. How many meetings were had with the commissioner and in conjunction with Disney saying, listen, this spot will not work? What can we do to work together to find a new spot?
Whoever they are, or, you know, either for our district or, or all of them, that's not the county. That's Reedy Creek. They can do whatever they want with their land, right?
No, not, uh, no, not correct. This is actually a big part of what's going on. So they had to de-annex out of Reedy Creek for this all to be possible.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're right. I mean, there wouldn't be a conversation.
So what is it zoned? So this land was first de-annexed, right? Is that what you're telling me? So it was first de-annexed, so it became a part of the district. So that was the first thing that they did, because Disney doesn't want people voting and all that kind of stuff. Uncle Dave, you sang about, we're recording, but you heading out? Uncle Dave's heading out. Okay.
Love you, brother.
See you, bud.
Bless you. Okay, thank you.
All right, so, so Disney de-annexed it first. Loved him. Disney de-annexed it first. And then, uh, so now it's under county control. What was it zoned? When they de-annexed it?
So they, simultaneously, they're rezoning it to, to be the multifamily housing.
What was it zoned when it, when it de-annexed?
Uh, uh, we'd have to go back to exactly what the ratio was.
Were they asking for a zoning of?
Yeah, they're, they're getting, uh, yeah, they're changing the use. That's absolutely part of it. The de-annexation was easy. That was done with the state ahead of time. And so now, now what it is, is that's your opportunity as a commissioner to work with the applicant, okay? Before it goes before the board of county commissioners. Because, you know, they want, they don't, especially, think of an organization like Disney. They don't want bad press. And this was terrible press. Yeah, so they're willing to sit down.
They've had a bad few years with press.
They what?
They've had a bad few years with press.
Oh, yeah, especially in Florida. Uh, but, so they, they would be willing to sit down and negotiate. And I believe there could have been opportunities to totally change that plan, because we know we need workforce housing. But like I say, we need workforce housing, we need single-family housing, we need affordable, attainable. We need all of it, because we have a housing crisis in Orange County. At the same time, that doesn't mean every project, everywhere, every time. It's got to be appropriate and it's got to be at the right time. And what I mean about the right time, it has to have the infrastructure first. And that's a big part of what I'm talking about is infrastructure first.
Disney wouldn't, I mean, that's at the outskirts of their border, which is why they're de-annexing it. They don't de-annex next to Hollywood Studios. So where else could they have put it? Because you, because you both, in theory, I mean, I say you both, you, you didn't actually have a vote. You both voted no, let's say it that way. She voted no and you just told me you wouldn't have voted no.
Well, more, more powerfully, I think it was such a disaster that that came before the board. It would have never gotten there. We would have worked to make a different plan at the beginning.
Could they put it on their?
Well, Disney, as you're aware, Disney has a lot of property.
Yes, but they're only de-annexing out here. They're not de-annexing here.
Within the outskirts, yeah. So there's land that residents have been identified.
They, if they put it there, side El Road's going to go crazy.
And, and, and it's a great question. I wish I had the answer, because I wish I had the opportunity to sit down with Disney for hours and hours until we got it done. But unfortunately, I wasn't the commissioner then. So when I'm the commissioner, I will get you that answer, because things will be different.
I got two more questions. Uh, this one, I have been losing sleep over for.
It's not true.
I've been losing sleep over this one, because, eh, you know, and, and I went, I went back to, and, and you've known this about me for years. This is, we've had casual conversations over, over the years, just a casual about politics. You still owe me a cigar, um, to go, uh, anyway, probably don't even remember. But, um, we've had casual conversations over this, over the years, just about the sanctity of democracy and the beauty of our, of our democracy. And I've been losing sleep over this one. And I've been dreading having this conversation with you, because, and I've been asking, I don't know if it got back to you. But I've been asking, like, I don't know how to approach this. I don't know how to approach this question, because it's, it's really bothered me. And it bothered me because, um, because I, I, I just don't think it's in the spirit of what, of who we are as a country and who we are as a democracy. Is it allowed? Absolutely. Um, but.
This is a really big buildup. What is it?
Well, it's because that's how much is bothering me.
Yeah.
And, um, uh, I'm getting the hook. All right, thank you. Uh, I just, I don't like that this race was pulled to August.
Oh, pulled to August, yeah.
Yes. I don't like that at all. And I find that to be subversive to democracy.
Yeah.
And I want to know, to what extent were you involved with that? And I say that, before you answer me, I say that because the person who I, I, I offered to come here, I offered everyone of the nonpartisan people, except for judges, because there's too many of them. And I have a business.
Chief Stephen Davis?
Yes. He's a friend of yours. You've been on his podcast, you're in photos together. He's been at your rallies. And in the final minute, that happened. And it's like a repeat of four years ago. And Nicole Wilson would not have won four years ago if Betsy Vanderland Scott would didn't do that four years ago. And here we are again, and I'm just exhausted by it, because I feel it's so subversive. So how come he, how come he did that, or you did that, or you did that together? And I say you did that together, because, um, uh, well, I'll, I'll, yes, answer it. And then I'll tell you why I said that. Well, because it's, it's been bothering me so much, because I know you. And, and it just, I'm just like, why?
So first of all, you're right. You said, if that didn't happen, Nicole probably wouldn't have won. I, I don't know what that means, but I do know this, that the CRC that I think you follow, it was constantly said, they're trying to get rid of this mechanism.
For November, that's a November.
That's right. No, no, he followed me on this. They're trying to get rid of it. Go back and watch that video. Because all they constantly said is that this helps the incumbent. So when this happened, I wasn't sure that this would help me. I don't even still know why it would help me. Because I, we were always told that this helps the incumbent. So if it wasn't Stephen Davis, I would be asking if she did it, right? Because why all of a sudden is it that it helps the challenger? Nicole Wilson's on video on and on about how unfair it is, because the incumbent did this, because she has the power of the incumbency. But now all of a sudden, because it happened in this race, nobody agrees with that logic anymore? I wanted, I wanted that answered.
Why, why did it happen then?
Well, to ask Stephen, Steve, Stephen Davis, he wrote a whole press release that we all read, because it was published. And he called me, like, two or three days before he wanted to do it. And he called me and he said, listen, I'm thinking about jumping into this race. He said, will it hurt you and will it make you mad at me? And so he, of course, I know the reason. So the guy got fired from Orange County. He's extremely upset. He's suing the county. And he just wrote a book about it. And so he wants to highlight this issue. He's not going to get any attention from the media. And so that's his thing. So he says, will it hurt you and will you be mad at me?
Then why doesn't he respond?
So I asked him, I said, are you going to pay the filing fee? He said, no. I'm like, well, you just got to do what you got to do. I don't know.
So you may have answered the second half of my question, which was, and probably why it kept me up to, up at night. Because the filing was like Friday at noon, right? Is that?
I don't know.
Let's.
Yeah, sure.
Friday at noon, a Friday and June at noon. You had to have your name.
I don't remember, in other words.
Okay, you had to have your name on the ballot by some Friday in, in June at noon.
Yeah.
The next Thursday, I had a mailer from you telling me to vote on August 20th. And I was like, why did he get involved in this? Because, or maybe I'm wrong, because, uh, somebody else was like, no, no.
Had the mailer ready, you mean?
Yes.
No, okay.
I'm like.
These mailers go out very fast. I mean, that's very, that's just simple.
It can be fast.
You just need to know how fast these things get produced, yeah.
So that, that's it.
We got, we got one coming up very quick. And it's going to be on an issue that just happened yesterday. And you're going to get in the mailbox very quick.
Okay.
So don't worry. So you'll see the power. No.
All right, and then the last question, the last question.
But I love how conspiracy theories start, you see?
No, it's not a conspiracy theory. I, it's just been bothering. And I wanted to ask you. I didn't want to ask anybody else.
I still don't know.
And Stephen Davis hasn't responded to my offer to come here.
Surprised by, because he wants to get the word out, that's the whole reason.
And, um, I think you just told me it's got a book to sell. And, and, um.
And I don't get any, not a dime of that book sale, okay?
Some of the other reporters that have been here through these campaign events, and I don't know if there's any here tonight, but they have told me the same thing. He's not reaching out. He's not finding, he's not coming, because I.
Well, I'm shocked by that. You just talked about the book he wants to sell, so I don't.
Yeah, okay.
You know, maybe he's too busy, I don't know.
The last question is your question. What have I not asked you that you want to talk about?
Uh, well, we have an infrastructure crisis in Orange County. We have a housing crisis in Orange County. And so what are we doing about it? Has it gotten better in the last four years or worse? Every resident that's been here for four years or more knows, knows that it's gotten worse. So what is the solution? The solution's not easy. You don't become the king of Orange County when you become the District One Commissioner.
You don't, yeah. I do love how government works.
Yeah, it's very difficult.
Your hands are going to be very tied and her hands are very tied.
That's right, that's right. Absolutely. So what you can do is you can act as a proper liaison to all the stakeholders. And yes, the big bad developers, we need to talk to them. We need to negotiate with them. We need to hold their feet to the fire. They need to help with infrastructure. And you don't do that by not talking to them, by skipping meetings and not attending meetings and not going to meetings with these stakeholders. You got to get in there and you got to negotiate. Negotiation is a huge part of what this job is. You cannot be an ideologue. You cannot be an activist. There's a different thing between being a leader and activist. We saw what it was for four years without the leadership component, with the activism component. A lot of times, there'll be a vote that I agree on with the current commissioner. I agree on her answer, but she gets outvoted all the time. It's never happened in the history of Orange County as much as it has happened in the last four years with this commissioner. So what we're going to do differently, we're going to work in partnership with everybody. So I'm going to talk to everybody and we're going to work things out.
I am very, um, pro people doing with their land what they want to do with their land. So why should you have to negotiate with the developers?
Because you live, we live in what's called a civil society. And so this is not anarchy. We've agreed a social compact exists and we have rules. And we have rules. You can't just develop to the detriment of your neighbor. That's not how this works.
Well, that's what we have zoning for.
Well, that's right. Well, that's, well, the zoning is a mechanism to use to negotiate, because they need to change zoning, they need to delete this, they need that. And there's plenty of opportunity to negotiate. And even negotiate in good faith, by the way. It's not always just a hardball thing. You know, in good faith, work it out. Listen, you don't want, you don't want these community meetings to go, hey, wire, do you? Well, listen, we need to get these people a turning lane over here. Would you be able to put that into the budget? Can you do that? It happens all the time. It happens all the time in District Two, in Apopka, with Christine Moore. She does a wonderful job.
The road that we're staring at, right here in front of the business, which also goes in front of my home, three commissioners ago, had that road. Uh, approved to be widened. I don't blame that commissioner. I don't blame the previous commissioner. And I don't blame this commissioner, that it's not widened yet. I blame the mechanics of how government works. And we just talked about hands being tied. So I don't, so. If, if you're elected, you're not gonna see the roads that you voted on.
You're right.
Built. You're gonna be out of office two terms. You'll be out of office before they start, just like the commissioner who voted to get this approved.
Sometimes, to an extent. To an extent, of course, that's true. Government bureaucracy is a total disaster. But the commissioner can work with staff, and that's another thing. Work with staff. You listen to some of these meetings, and it's like they're fighting with the staff, creating enemies out of them. Well, that's not how you get things done. I can't go in my business and start yelling at all the staffers and think that it's gonna work. That's not gonna work.
Meetings will continue until morale improves. I have a big picture of that, right, right here in the kitchen.
You need to work with them. You need to work with them, and then they're gonna prioritize your things more. Because what's happening is other districts are getting priorities done. And I do use District Two as an example. Christine Morris has done a good job up there. She works with staff. And they get, projects prioritized. And it is that simple. You know why? Because human beings continue to exist to be human beings. So you gotta work in partnership with somebody. You can't have this division all the time going on in the county. We see it on full display from the dais. And it's gotta end. And it's gonna end when I become commissioner.
We're gonna end right there. So good for you, uh, good for you for stepping up. Good for you for, for wanting to serve. And, um, and for, for spending time with me. I appreciate it. I appreciate pizza. You did a good job.
Thank you. Yeah, that was delicious. Good ingredients, good technique.
And, uh, Austin, thanks for being here, man.
Thank you, brother.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate the time. Thanks for doing this.
Yeah, now go interact.
Thanks for being the best pizza.
There's people waiting, so.
Best pizza in West Orange County.
All right, thanks, man. Enjoy.